I'm calling to order the Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017 meeting of the Planning Commission for the town of Corder Madera. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mecca.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Thank you, full commission. At this point in the meeting, we ask for public comment on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. If you have something you would like to speak about for three minutes, please stand up, speak your name and your subject. And there's no one here to do that, that I see. So unless Jane has something to say, we're going to close the public comment section and go directly to our agenda items that we have tonight. So first item is a new hearing for 216 Granada Drive appeal, an appeal of a minor design review application, PL 2017-0073, for the construction of a seven-foot-tall fence in the side yard between 216 and 220 Granada Drive. I think I just want to take a quick poll before we turn it over to Mr. Bush, who's been up to the site. Has everybody been up there?
I have.
Okay.
I have.
I have not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So any other statements of communication that the council, the commission members want to relate? No?
No.
All right. Thank you. So now it's up to you, Mr. Bush.
All right. Thank you. So just to worry on ourselves, we're looking at 216 Granada Drive, which is southeast Corder Madera, shown here on the map. The process here, just to give a little bit of background, was that a minor design review application was submitted to the planning department for a seven-foot fence. This is in the R1 medium-density residential zone, which states that to, you may exceed in the side yard or the rear yard, six feet, up to eight feet, by either getting approval of adjacent neighbors or going through the design review process. Here, there was not agreement between the neighbors, and an application was submitted for a design review. So it went through staff. That means that an application was submitted, showing the location, you know, all the typical information that's appropriate for the application. Staff reviewed that, asked for some clarification, some back-and-forth with the applicant, and upon receiving a complete application, sent the required notice, provided 10 days for that required noticing period, didn't receive any feedback at that time, provided approval based on all the design review findings being made, although different in scale than, you know, an addition or a significant remodel that often, oftentimes, we're considering. It goes through that same process of having to meet the required design review findings, and staff was able to make all of those findings. Following the approval of the project, staff received notice from the neighbor 220 Granada, the Zellers, that they wished to appeal, and there was also some disappointment shared. They were unfortunately away and didn't receive the notice at the time that it was sent out, so they were able to file an appeal as a way of, I guess, engaging with the process and kind of explaining the issues that they have with the proposal. So that's generally the process, and so here we are at the next highest level with the Planning Commission, and you're looking at the proposal to replace an existing six-foot fence with a seven-foot fence, the style and material's not changing significantly, and the location not changing. And I have just a few slides here, if we go the right direction. So again, it's the fence between 216 and 220 Granada. Majority of you had an opportunity to go out and see that. Just have some imagery here, just for your reference, courtesy of Google Earth, just showing obviously 216 Granada on the right and 220 Granada on the left here. It's replacing that fence that's shown. Portions of the existing fence are falling over. It's kind of necessitates this, looking into, you know, a solution for replacing the existing fence. In this neighborhood, there's sort of a terracing down the road of each home, and so 220 Granada in this case is somewhat higher than 216, as you can see here and as you may have seen at your site visit. And kind of moving on, one way that we have to kind of confirm that the location of the existing fence is actually on the property line is through available surveys that we had. This one was actually from another application for 220 Granada, for a previous design review, and this kind of confirms that the existing fence is in the proper location. So sometimes that's under question, and in this case, it is not. We also have additional photos that were provided by the applicant to kind of supplement review tonight. We have also, just to reference in the staff report, it's all, you know, laid out there for you as well, but there is an attachment with both the appeal and the original application or portions of the original application for the fence for your review in the staff report. Just to kind of set up even broader context, kind of going back before this was submitted, the neighboring property at 220 Granada went through a design review process very similar to this, and went to the Planning Commission for the demolition of an existing single-story residence and the construction of a new two-story residence there. As far as I understand, that's received building permits and is moving forward, but at this time, the original house is still there, which is what you, which you may have seen. But by looking at this sort of diagram from that design review, it kind of just helps to highlight the relationship between the proposed structure that was approved and the adjacent house on the left here, which is 216 Granada, just kind of showing some of the changes that are happening. The house is going up a bit in elevation. There's going to be a crawl space beneath it, and there's going to be a deck along the, I guess, what would be the west, southwest side, on the side, and then into the rear. And just by looking at the, at the steps that are going up to it, each of those, I think, has a rise around seven inches, so you're looking at something like 21 inches higher than this deck would be. So when you're standing in the existing side yard versus when you would be standing on the approved deck, you're going to be a bit higher over the fence. And I think ultimately, that's what this application is about for 216 Granada, that they're, they desire greater privacy and have asked for the increase in fence to kind of help provide that. Whether seen in the context of the neighboring proposal or even without this construction, it's my understanding that it is their desire to see, to see the height of the fence increase, thus they're going through this process. So again, I have just some of the verbiage here from the zoning ordinance that kind of outlines the process, and again, we have the required findings, I think, pretty clearly here. The finding that is under question is number three, which has to do with effects on neighboring properties. The appellant, the Zellers, have raised some concerns over shading to a proposed garden area on the west side and, as well as blockages to views. As described in the staff report, these impacts were also evaluated in the context of the proposed residence there, and despite the house increasing by over 13 feet, when looking at kind of a similar case, the effect on, from 220 to the right neighbor, it was also determined at that time that primary views are to the northwest here toward Tam and toward the Marsh and are not toward, toward the west. And that was kind of established in that context, and staff believes that in this case as well, that, you know, being consistent about that kind of interpretation about where primary views are and what would be considered a significant impact would not be something like a one-foot addition to a fence in the side yard. And furthermore, the shading, although, you know, obviously no shade study was done or anything like that, staff believes that this would be a very minimal impact to the shading and believes all the findings can be made. Obviously, one of the benefits of having this hearing tonight is that we have an opportunity to hear a bit more from both the applicant and the appellant to get a better understanding of what they're, what they're trying to achieve and what some of the concerns are. So that basically sums up my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions and provide that opportunity for everyone else to speak.
And just because we're going to be speaking about findings later this evening, just in the staff report, obviously Doug has laid out in detail the findings in the analysis section of the staff report and also in the draft resolution that was included in the, as an attachment to the report, the staff's, how staff was able, staff's view in terms of making the, being able to make the findings. So if you have any questions about those, please feel free to ask Doug.
Thank you, gentlemen. That said, the first order of business to see if the commissioners have any questions for staff. Phyllis.
No, I would just like Charles to lower that microphone. It blocks my view of the screen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Bundy.
No questions.
All right. Ms. Freeman.
I don't. Thanks.
I have one question. So my understanding with side setbacks is that there are also for fire access. So does that preclude planting in the side setbacks to keep it clear for the fire access?
So generally speaking, my understanding is that fire likes to see three feet of kind of accessible corridor between the fence and the, and the structure. That wasn't raised through the kind of building permit process for the adjacent design review, so I presume that fire did sign off on that or had a chance to review that and provided their approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. With that said, then, the appellant has 10 minutes to make his case, followed by the applicant for 10 minutes. So I'll let Mr. Zeller start out, and I'm going to keep time here on my iPad, but please state your name and proceed.
My name is William Zeller. I live at 220 Granada. Before I get into my statement, I have a question.
I don't think this is a...
Okay. I'm on.
Bill Zeller. My name is William Zeller. I live at 220 Granada Drive. Before I get into my statement, I'd ask to have a question for Mr. Bush. You said the height of the deck was 21 inches above grade. I, I'm not aware of that. I'm sorry. I didn't see that on our drawings. We weren't designing for that. Is that, is that, is that something? Sorry.
So it's just an estimate? If I, may I address that?
Yes.
So it's just, it's just an estimate based on the building code requirements for the rise of the, of the steps?
Those steps are, I'm, I'm not sure that there was anything really done engineering-wise for those steps as far as that goes. Our conversation has been predominantly the relationship of the finished grade of the existing house and the finished grade of the new house, and the fact that the new house, including the deck, the first floor of the new house, is about seven inches higher than the existing house. And the view was from the edge of the deck over the fence was the issue that, as I understood it, and the applicant might want to modify that, but that was predominantly what I understood to be the issue. So I could, I'll get into my question.
Well, to specifically answer your, since you brought it up, the plans say that there's an 18-inch difference between the grade and the first floor, so that would be typically three risers. So that would be three steps.
Okay.
From 306 to 30752 is the declared elevation of the first floor of the house. Three steps.
Okay. And the, it's not, it's not a finished grade that's not without its undulations in different places. Okay. So, but my, my doc, I'm sorry, were you going to say something? No. Peter. My, up to this point, I've basically been thinking in terms of the elevation of the existing house and the new house. So that's kind of the way I've written this. My wife and I do object to raising the height of the fence from six to seven inches, or six to seven feet, excuse me. The design review process, as, well, I won't go through that, I've already mentioned this, we're assuming this, we assume this all dealt with the elevation of the first floor. We, we agree that the neighbor's privacy shouldn't be diminished by our project, but we really felt we had gone through quite a bit of effort to ensure, to, to ensure that the sightline from any place we could actually stand in the house to the new, the new elevation didn't change significantly. We, we didn't really get much response back as far as how that, that sightline had changed or how their, their privacy had been diminished, so we kind of felt like we had pushed as far as we could on that, and we basically could not come to an agreement on this, on this. And so that's kind of my statement. Do you have any questions for me? Or do I get to answer questions now or what?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Zeller before we ask the applicant? We'll be able to ask again later, but do you have any questions?
I would like to wait until after we hear from the applicant.
Okay. Bob?
Mr. Zeller, the raised planter bed garden, that's not on the deck. That's going to be at the original grade level?
Yes. And back towards the fence.
Jennifer?
I don't have any additional questions.
Julie?
I have one question.
Sure.
So given the new understanding of the height of the deck being 22 inches higher as established by Peter, would that change your consideration of the ability to look over the fence at your neighbor?
We were trying to do the, establishing the sightline from an existing point, which was in the bathroom of the existing house. I think, yeah, I'd be open to some concessions there. I didn't realize it was that high. I'll be honest with you. And we had, we had a long meeting at our house, and I don't recall hearing this before, so I missed it.
I'm calling it 18 inches, right?
Yeah.
So between the grade of 306, which is a new higher grade than the existing grade, and, but your elevation of the floor height increase from the existing is the seven inches from the existing higher. So, I mean, those are facts that are in the set of plans, and that's what it is.
I'm not going to argue that.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. The applicant, please. You have 10 minutes. State your name.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Bergenom, and I'm here with my husband, Mark. Thanks for taking the time to hear from us tonight about our minor design review proposal for a seven-foot fence at 216 Granada Drive. As you know, staff has already recommended that the project be approved over the objection of our neighbors, the Zellers, and because we agree with those well-reasoned recommendations, we'll not take up a lot of your time tonight. I do want to give a little bit of background and briefly describe the, some of the points raised in the appeal. We've owned our home for about 10 years, and in that home, we're raising two young girls, ages two and four. We love spending time in our yard. We love that our girls can spend time in their yard with our friends without any concern for privacy at this point. In 2016, our neighbors approached us with the intention of building a new home. They planned to go from a height of 12 feet, 5 inches, to a height of 25 feet, 4 inches, and to double their square footage with an expansive deck and side deck, as you saw. I would, I came into this process thinking that the floor height of the home was only going to be raised seven inches, so that was what our seven-foot fence proposal was based on, learning that it's higher.
I don't think it's higher. It is seven inches higher.
Okay. So the seven-foot fence that we've proposed is only a net increase of less than six inches from what currently exists in the fence height. The Planning Commission may remember that the staff report dated June 21st, 2016 noted significant impacts to us and the other neighbor from the Zellers project. In finding number three, staff noted that the proposed project represents a significant departure from the existing residence in terms of floor area, height, and architectural style, and point two, that none of the homes within the immediate vicinity have deviated so significantly from their original design, and point three, that the new home represents a more than doubling in square footage and also has a large deck being added to the side and back of the new residence, and point four, that it's clear from the diagrams, provided that the applicant, as well as the story poles present on the property, that the increased height of the structure will block some western views for the eastern neighbor, as well as views of the water from the western neighbor. So despite the loss of views and the impact to our privacy, Mark and I wanted to be good neighbors, and so when we were asked to support the Zellers project, we did. And you may recall that we even wrote a letter of support, although we had concerns that our project would, that their project would impact our views and privacy. When we offered our support for the project, we believed, perhaps naively, that the Zellers would work with us as needed to mitigate some of the impact of the project on our lives and on our home. Once their project was approved, it faced significant opposition in the neighborhood, and we were asked to join the opposition, but again, in the spirit of being good neighbors, we did not do that. So now, a year later, we've asked the Zeller to allow us a moderate increase, a modest increase in fence height to compensate for the loss of our privacy, and they've refused. So the Zellers give little reason to the opposition except to argue with finding number three, and they claim that this, somehow this modest increase will interfere with their views and sunlight. As for the views, this is very difficult to, to imagine. At our and the other neighbors' expense, they have expanded their views. Unlike the rest of the neighborhood, they enjoy, they will now enjoy expansive views from all sides, and it seems unreasonable for them to now claim rights to the superior view and at the same time tell us that we can't have privacy because they have, they need even more of a view. We'd also like to mention that when the Zellers sought approval of their project, they argued that our lost view, as a result of adding 13 feet of height, were not primary views, and it seems that they should now not be argued, be allowed to argue that this view is a primary view. The secondary view and the minor impact of a one-foot increase on it, and with a seven-foot floor height increase of their home and deck, it's a net six inches. It should not take precedent over our right for privacy. And as for the claim of loss of sunlight, this is also hard, really, to imagine that it would have a real impact on sunlight, since Corder Madera allows for a fence up to eight feet, which we could have reasonably requested, given the scope of their project. We understand that allowing for an eight-foot fence, there was some consideration that seven feet would be an acceptable height, that would still allow for plenty of sunlight while also accommodating a neighbor's indisputable right for privacy. The claim concern for future veggie beds over our privacy feels disheartening and inequitable. So thanks for your time.
Hold it right there. Phyllis, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, because I didn't have a chance to talk to you when I saw the site, and I did speak to Mr. Zeller, and I brought this up. As a compromise, because both families are going to have to live next to each other.
Yes.
And it would be nice if everybody could get along. Doing a fence that the first six feet would be solid and the additional foot would be lattice work, I'm sure you've seen those fences around in several places. If you could work that out with the Zellers, would that be acceptable to you and your family?
At this point, we'd strongly prefer a solid seven-foot fence. You know, I'm five foot six, so with a seven-foot inch increase, I would be able to look over a six-foot fence. You know, other neighbors are taller than that, considerably taller than that, and I don't, I think, I would prefer to have it.
But you're aware of what those lattice work?
Yeah.
And they're different designs and closer lattices, et cetera?
Yeah. I, you know, I don't want to say we would absolutely not, you know, because I want to be reasonable. We've tried to be reasonable through this whole process, but that wouldn't be our first choice, for sure.
Okay. But thank you.
I have a photo of one, if you want, but I don't know if that complicates.
We can't. Right. Thank you. Dr. Bundy.
Because I didn't hear what Jane...
She said she had a photo, but we can't really...
I had the same thought as you, Phyllis, in terms of a suggestion, so I took a photo of one.
Yeah. Carrie, is the, is the primary concern the, along the side of the house or the house and the deck from the standpoint of privacy?
The house and the deck, because it seems that the home was built with the intention of the deck being an extension of the house. That was how it was proposed to us, and so it seems natural that that, there would be the same impact whether you're inside the house or right on the deck outside of the house. Is that clear?
Yes.
Mr. Lee, do you have any questions? No. Okay. Jennifer?
I don't have any. I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I don't either.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll see if there's any member of the public that would like to step up and make a comment about this. We'll open the public comment section of this. Is there anyone who would like to make a statement regarding this appeal? Seeing none, then we'll take it back and ask the appellant if he would like to rebut anything that he has heard. You have five minutes.
Thank you. I was, wasn't aware we were rehearing the, our, our permit on our original house. We had, we had gone through quite an ordeal on that. We actually had a meeting, and I think, I mean, most of you were here for that meeting, and we went, we made a number of concessions aimed at improving the privacy, and I thought that we had, we had addressed that.
We're not here to address that, so...
Well, I'm just, it was brought up, and I'm just kind of want to, want to make sure that that's clear. And as far as the opposition, yeah, we had some opposition. It's, it was taken care of. We weren't very happy with the way we had to go with it, but we were, we basically, the appeal to the, the house went away, and we got our permit, so we're trying to move forward with that. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay. That's it, then. All right. Applicant, you have an opportunity to readdress anything here you'd like to say or, you know, if there is anything.
I'll just request something briefly, and the question from Phyllis was, would there be a willingness to compromise? And also, when a couple of you came to visit, you asked how hard we worked with the Zellers to get this done.
Just state your name for the record.
Oh, sure. It's Mark Bergenom at 216 Granada Drive. And the answer to how hard we worked is tirelessly. We had multiple face-to-face meetings with the Zellers. I have a chronology here of over 20 emails. I met with Doug and Adam two times, and I met with Doug multiple times after that, and phone calls. We've worked very hard to try to get something done. In terms of compromise, even, I have an email here from April 3rd where Adam emailed me and said Doug had reached out to Bill and asked if they would consider a slightly taller fence. So if you remember in the appeal, he says, "We're asking for an eight-foot fence." We never did that. At any rate, Doug asked Bill for a slightly taller fence, and Bill was unwilling to even talk to Doug about that. And so I just want to point out, we did work very hard to get something done.
Okay. That's what you'd like to say? Thank you. All right. So then, that's the extent of statements and public input that we're, we'll be open for at this point, so I'll bring it back up here to the commission and ask the commissioners for their consideration of this appeal to raise the fence, one, to stop from the applicant from raising the fence one foot. So Phyllis?
I don't have any problem with raising the fence a foot. I mean, I was there in your bathroom, standing on the magazines to see the increased height, and I think that if you could show that slide again from Google Earth... Yes. You can see the area of the yard that is being used, how close it is to the Zeller house, and I think the seven foot is appropriate. As I say, I don't have a problem with it if both the appellant and the applicant were willing to have lattice with the top, you know, one foot, and that kept the neighbors talking to each other, that would be fine, but I have no problem with it as a solid seven-foot fence.
All right. Thank you. That's simply stated.
Yeah.
Dr. Bundy?
I think any fence that goes over six foot, it is a solid fence, really looks very monolithic, and we try to avoid that with buildings and other structures and such. And I think Phyllis's idea of lattice, which I thought was actually the code, we actually have a... have an eight-foot fence at our house, but top two feet is lattice, and I thought that was sort of the requirement. This is an older fence. I am concerned that, from the Zellers backyard, that they do have a nice view looking out over the ridge, that I believe would be blocked by this, whereas the areas between the houses, or the extent of the Zeller house, I think the, the seven-foot fence wouldn't really interfere with the views. But I would be hesitant to require the seven-foot fence all the way out. And I, they, one of the compromises, you know, I think I would like to see, and I think all of us are sort of struggling with, the issue of, we're not sure what it's really gonna look like when the house is finished. The idea of, you know, can you wait another year to do the fence until the house is finished? Or can you do the fence with seven-foot four-by-fours, solid fence to six foot, and see if you could have a reset, and look at this in the, in the future, once the house is finished? I would certainly be concerned if, as the finished house really did impact the privacy of 216, that I would sort of reconsider, from the standpoint of the seven foot all the way. But as of, right now, my, my thought would be, seven foot along the house, and six foot in the backyard.
All right. Thank you.
Excuse me, if I, because of what Bob said, may I just...
Okay.
The 216, there are no windows along the house, that side of the house. Really what is being spoken of is the backyard. So making along the house seven foot, and the backyard six foot, does not solve the problem.
So, just to clarify, the application, this is from the application, or the appellant?
This drawing? That's from the application.
Okay. So in this application, the wood fence, described as new wood fence, is not for the entirety of the length of the fence, it is for a piece of it. And so it, its intent is to block the backyard from being seen from 220. And the deck of 220 would continue further out, and the fence would be lower for the extended patio, 220.
From my reading of the documents, I thought the wooden fence was supposed to be replaced in its entirety to a seven feet.
Yeah, so there's a portion, there's a portion of the fence that's all wood, and then it changes to being a wire fence. It's even kind of shown here, very small, but...
As it goes down, the down slope.
As it starts to step down.
So this, this house that you see here, just the footprint, is the existing footprint of 220 Grenada. The wood section of the fence extends all the way back to about, maybe about here, and then it changes to a, just a chain link fence. And the application is to replace the existing wood fence with a new wood fence, and not to modify the chain link fence. Because there's a portion on both of these lots where it's, it's somewhat steep, sloped, you know, they don't appear to be, you know, using them as gardening space, et cetera, and it's more just, you know, that's where the chain link fence is being used.
All right. Jennifer?
Yeah. So, a few thoughts. As I think about this, I think we've been pretty consistent in a lot of hearings up in this area, in defining primary versus secondary views. And I think we've continued to agree that the northwest views are the primary views. So from the Zellers' perspective, I don't believe that the southwest view is the primary view. I think it is a secondary view. Given that the floor height is increasing seven inches, it's really a net five inches between what's currently in place and what would be in place. So I agree with Phyllis, that if we could get a compromise, where you guys put some lattice work on the top foot, that would be great. But even if you decide not to do that, I would encourage the Zellers, perhaps you could raise your beds higher, since that's not a difficult thing to do, to bring in some additional dirt, if the concern is around the shading of the vegetable beds. So I am supportive of the applicant in continuing with replacement of the six-inch fence with the seven-inch fence. I don't find the change of the five net inches to be significant or adverse to the Zellers.
Six foot, right. You were saying inches.
Oh, sorry, six-foot fence to a seven-foot fence. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I can also make this, the findings, as they're currently stated. The current building, I don't think there would be any significant impacts, and I don't, just because there's an approved permit, it hasn't been built yet, so there would be no impacts on the existing building. And then, in the future, I think it would mitigate, you know, and help with some privacy that the new construction would cause to the neighbor. So I can support the findings and agree. And I don't believe that you need to do, you know, some, some kind of porous perme...
Oh, the lattice.
The lattice. I don't think that's necessary for a one foot. I think for an eight foot, maybe, but...
That's actually code in many towns.
Right. But I think it also doesn't give them, it's still, you can see through it, so the whole purpose is for privacy. So I think it negates the whole purpose, unless they're just wanting to replace the fence, because it's falling down.
Okay, that's what you've got to say about it. So for my part, I think that the seven-foot fence is a necessity to create, due of privacy to 216. I, from my perspective, could see that part of the patio, life, people walking and so forth, was visible from what would be the edge of the deck of 220. So that, I think the fence does block that, and I did not see that it blocked the long distant views. Following the method of magazines stacked and looking across, and trying to draw a line over to the distant hillsides, I couldn't see that it blocked the distant hillsides. When I'm looking at the photograph here of the fence, it appears that, since we don't have a red pointer there, is that the break of the fence, Doug, that you're pointing to with the cursor?
I hope they wanna go further. Wouldn't be wood as well, and it still wouldn't extend the whole...
Okay. So I'm sorry. Out of turn, but Doug, can you clarify, please?
Yes, on the, on the site plan that you have there, it specifies the length of the And, yeah, basically, as you follow the slope down, down with our little pointer here, there's a point at which the vines start to creep over, and that's the general area, the transition between the two fences. But ultimately, what's being proposed is what's shown on the, on the site plan. That specific length.
Peter, in the packet, there are two pictures, and one of them shows where the slope starts.
Yeah.
I think it was in the packet, the two colored photographs. It wasn't in the packet. Somewhere, oh, here it is, on the page before we get to the packet. Here, not in the packet, not in the application part, here.
Yeah, okay.
And you can see where the slope starts in the right-hand picture. It also shows the story polls for the Zeller house.
Okay, yeah. So I believe that the seven-foot fence is acceptable and provides sufficient privacy due, I think, to the neighbors, given the overall bulk of the house, and I think they have a right to the seven-foot fence. They can build it, and I think the staff was justified in granting the approval of the application. So I would be in favor of a plain seven-foot fence. Is there anybody here who can create a motion for the resolution that is attached here? Or modify resolution?
So, do we need to deny the appeal? Is that how that works?
That's correct.
Okay. I can make a motion to deny appeal PL 2017-0090, an appeal of minor design review application PL 2017-0073, for the construction of a seven-foot tall fence in the side yard between 216 and 220 Grenada Drive.
I can second it.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bundy?
No.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chairman, can I?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. So what are the remedies?
Yep, we can read appeal rights for this as well.
Following action by the planning commission...
Following action by the planning commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days, and appeal forms are available at the planning department, and a fee of $300 is required.
Thank you very much. Thank everyone for your participation in this effort. Good luck with establishing a rapport. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So, tonight we have two business items. The first one is the role of findings, discussion and study session, reviewing the role of findings in the planning commission decision-making. And the second are design guidelines, discussion of existing Corte Madera guidelines, and possible appointment of a subcommittee to review, discuss potentially proposed design criteria for planning commission consideration. So, tonight, Adam Wolf and Judith Prop have put together a presentation for findings, and I can't wait.
This is one of those opportunities we are taking this evening, with not a extensive agenda, to actually have some discussion items, just about how, well, on a couple, I think, of important items. And I'm, they're two separate items, just to clarify that, so we're gonna take them separately. The first one, really, in my view, sort of goes back in some, well, I would say, in some ways, is just a review of the critical role that findings do play in planning, planning commission decision-making. It's always a good thing, I think, to, from time to time, have a discussion about it, allow commissioners to raise any questions that they may have, or things that have been percolating in the back of their minds, learn from each other, learn from each other's questions, and basically have, you know, make sure everybody's on a level, has the same level of understanding about how to go about making decisions at, at the planning commission level. Obviously, you know this, sort of, inherently, in the decision-making process, you've been doing this, but it's always good to just allow the opportunity for the commission to sort of ask questions that they may have. And we do have new commission, a new commission member, that I think was a good opportunity to have this meeting at this time. So, we don't have an elaborate presentation here. I think I did try to provide some good background information, and some documents in the staff report, that speak to the role of findings in the decision-making process. And one in particular was provided by, well, Judith and I both have sort of collectively thought about, these were good documents to share. Some of them, we've already shared, we included in the planning commissioner, planning commissioners' handbook, with sort of the, when you were initiated to the commission, that was one of the documents that we've actually provided. Some of you may have looked through that a long time ago, but we wanted to bring it back to the fore with this meeting. So I'm gonna have Judith sort of provide an overview, sort of the big picture, high, looking down, as you will, from, I don't know what you call it, the 10,000-foot level, so to speak, of, of an overview of findings. And then I can sort of get into a little bit more of staff's role, of how we've been viewing and incorporating findings, for example, into our staff reports and so on. So try to make it, bring it back a little bit more to Corte Madera, from the big picture. So...
Great.
I'll hand it over to Judith at this point.
Good evening, and thanks for your attention to this. We've been asked, over time, both Adam and I, to provide educational opportunities, background, and tools to make your job. I mean, you folks spend a great deal of your time going through all of the planning commission agendas, and a lot of your time at hearings, and when staff's available, we wanna provide you with additional tools to make your job actually, I don't know, easier, or smoother, or certainly be available to support the time and energy that you donate to the community. So, as Adam gave you kind of the overview, we've been asked, over time, about findings. And I'm gonna address a little bit on the what are findings, and the why you make findings, and then Adam and I will both touch on a little bit on how to make them. You folks already do that every time that you're here at the hearing, so we're not here to, you know, start from square 101. We think you do a great job at that. It's just more of going through the background, and especially since we have some newer commissioners to the planning commission, and it's planning commission and council, really, that are responsible to make those kinds of findings for adjudicatory-type hearings and things like that. So what are findings? I mean, we'll get into the why, but what are they? You do them all the time, they're in every packet and every resolution. So a little bit about what findings are from state law perspective, and what the courts look for about findings, and what they are. And all it is, is a written explanation of why or how you reached a decision. So, again, if you kind of take a step back to your ultimate decision, it's just really to show each other, the community, lay the groundwork, and a little bit of a trail as to how you reached that decision. So you're looking for a written explanation of why the planning commission made a particular decision. The findings actually show how the commission applied the factual evidence that was presented to reach your conclusion. Another way of putting it, it sort of traces the path between the staff report, what you hear at a public hearing, what you're presented with, and your final decision. It's really just the reason, your reasoning, and how you analyze what's in the staff report, what you hear at a public hearing, to reach your decision. Sort of like if you were drawing somebody a trail map to get to somewhere, or directions. Question is, why do you do it? Mostly, it's because it's mandated under state law, but it's, it's part of the record for the proceeding. So some decisions are final at a staff level, some are final at a planning commission, some are final at the council level. At the different levels, the findings reflect in the record what the group before you had decided. For example, we said that we're not gonna use specific, but just in general, tonight you had an appeal from a staff-level decision. So again, what was in your packet was what the staff analyzed, how they reached their findings and their conclusion, so that you could not only review it, because you hear that independently, but it gives you what that analysis, what that roadmap was. And then you get to review it at your level, and you get to come up with your own roadmap, your own rationale for... your own rationale for reaching your own conclusion. And then, in the event that this matter is appealed to the council, the council has both the staff-level analysis of the findings, they have a Planning Commission analysis of the findings, and then they hear the matter at the council level new. They don't have to rely on any of that, but it gives them the understanding and the rationale and the roadmap for that. And ultimately, under the why is, if a matter is challenged in the court, all the court does, unlike what Planning Commissioner, council does, the court actually does have to review the record. They can only rely on the record. The court doesn't take new evidence on land use challenges, and so they will be looking to see what the roadmap was for the final decision. And really, all the why of the findings is to explain, in this case, how the Planning Commission made your decision, and it assists the applicants, the community, the council, a future, you know, hearing officer, as to understanding what the rationale was for those, what the rationale was for the final decision.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Where did our findings come from?
Well, we're going to get to that.
Oh, you're going to get to that.
That's sort of the how.
Okay.
And I'm going to just do, no, no, no. We want you to, that's a good question, and we're going to get there. So that's, I'm going to lay out the what, what are findings, the why are the findings, and then we're going to dovetail into how, and where do they come from, and the what you can rely on. And I'll tee that up. Let's start talking about the how. What findings are based on is evidence in the record. Well, what is that? And that is the staff reports, any other reports that might be before you, technical reports, environmental reports, or personal observations. You folks all go out to the site, people come at the podium and tell you what they saw, what they observed, personal observations, comments that are made, oral comments that are made before you as a Planning Commission, exhibits, and any other written or oral documentation. So that's sort of what is the factual evidence that's before you, that starts that how process, and what you can rely on. And then, I think I'll turn it back over to Adam to start talking about where you find that, and start answering some of the questions.
Sure. And so I think, I think though, getting to, Jennifer, your comment is, is a good one, because not all findings are the same. We're talking about findings, and there are a lot of different findings for different projects for different reasons, and each jurisdiction comes up with their own sort of findings. And, and they're really reflective of what each jurisdiction community thinks are the real questions, essentially, or the, or the requirements for approving a project. And ours are different than Mill Valley's, that are different than Denofel, and so on and so forth. Specifically, I think ours, you know, I know they at least go back to '94, it seems like there was a modification in '99. I don't know the full history of where they came from, but they go back some time, clearly, and, and, and they're part of the zoning code, so they, they are part of the ordinance, like any other part of the ordinance. They were created at one point, and get evaluated from time to time, go through different reviews, and potentially can be modified. So, what we do is this, you know, as staff, and I just, I guess the typical staff report is, is based on, you know, what Judith just described, is go through the same, we look at those findings intently. We obviously do our first review is of the zoning code, and, and making sure that a project that comes before you is either compliant with the ordinance, the zoning ordinance and all the zoning code, which are one of the mandates and, and development standards, or are at least applying for the correct entitlement, if they are not, so a variance or design review application, whatnot. And then go through each of the findings ourselves, and as you know, we've, what we've done since I've been here is try to actually develop that a little bit further, in the, in the putting sort of meat on the bone of each of these findings, and tying it back to specific evidence, either in the application, based on site conditions, and so on and so forth, an analysis of each individual site, and some of whether you, you know, measurements and so on and so forth, you kind of do this analysis. And, and, you know, take one at a time, and, and write out, in our own recommendation, generally, we will write out, if we, if we are making a recommendation for approval, for example, we will write out the reasons why, sort of in general form, we try to do it more as a discussion first, in the staff, the body of the staff report, and then it may be repetitive to a certain degree, but then, very specifically, under each finding in the draft resolution, we will write down for all of you specifically those reasons why each finding, we believe, could be met. We have also, I provided you with an example in the past where we did a draft resolution based on, over time, many conversations and meetings with the commission, but provided a draft resolution for denial of a project where the findings could not be met, in staff's view, and made that recommendation. And then there are times where, more or less, we will have the discussion in the staff report about different considerations, where there may be challenges in staff's view, where findings may not be able to be made, or the certain factors that led to us not to, they may not, yeah, I'll just say it again, they, where we felt there were challenges in making some of the findings, and other findings maybe not so, were, were easier to make, and sort of try to direct, in our discussion, the staff to consider those same, those same issues that staff, staff felt were the important considerations for discussion. We've done that in the past as well, where generally, we will not include a resolution because we are not making a recommendation for approval or denial. So that's, you know, I think if you look through past resolutions, again, we don't want to get into specific ones, especially recent resolutions and whatnot, but there have been a lot of detailed information when, that we try to provide for the commission in our recommendations, that you can look at and use to see whether or not you agree with that or not. Or if there is other information that you'd like to add to the resolution, or evidence to add to the record, to bolster some of the findings that staff has recommended, has said we can make. Now, it's, it's up to you, essentially, it's up to the commission then to say, we agree, we want to modify that, don't agree with this portion of the, of the recommendation, and so on. So, I want to, you know, I want to see if you have any questions at this point, and maybe if I left something off, let me know, but, or if you, you know, anything else that you...
Let me just get back to Commissioner Friedman's question a little bit, is, the findings are generally, that staff relies on, that are in your report, are generally, you can go back to the zoning code, and for each application, like a design review, a general, a general plan amendment, a zoning, in the zoning code, and Adam will talk about more of the particulars, but generally, each of those applications have criteria which have to be met, and those are typically laid out in your staff report, by staff, saying, here are the findings that have to be made. And you'll notice that in the past several months, if not most of the year, depending on which planning staff is presenting it, and Adam's got some PowerPoints tonight to go through it, a lot of times, Phil, or Adam, or Doug will put up a slide that says, here are the findings that have to be made. And many of those, and most of those, go back to the zoning code. I'm going to give you two exceptions that are governed by state law. Variances are set forth, the findings that have to be made for a variance are set forth in state law, so that's mandated, and Adam will get into that in detail. And also, your environmental review. Your findings under CEQA are also set by the state law, not by local. So, other than that, most of those are, where you find those criteria is in, in the Court of Madera municipal code, and primarily in the zoning code. But, again, Adam can take you through each of the types of findings that you make for the applications.
When I had asked for this item to be on the agenda, I asked for us to discuss specifically these required findings, and the reason for it is, you've given a general overdue, you know, but, looking at our own codes, and I don't have the code book with me, but I have some of it, I, the findings are 18.30.070.
It's up on the screen.
Okay? Now, I've got them right here. But, and I will give the example of what got me interested in this, and as I say, I spoke before the council three times about why we need a design review guidelines because of this. These are so amorphous, you could buy a fish tank over at the pet store down the street, stick it in the middle of the lot, and it will meet the findings. But, you've got in 18.30.030, the residential guidelines, you know, this is part of the same thing, that this is criteria that a single-story design is encouraged. Yet, by a four-one vote, a three-story home at the top of a hill was approved, with people saying it met the findings. There's conflict. You can't say you're encouraging a one-story home, you cannot say there's something in the general plan that talks about new development should be, whenever possible, one-story, and then you look at the findings, and I think it's number three, and here is a three-story home at the top of a hill. This contradicts itself, it does not make sense. This is what got me interested in doing all this research.
Well, yeah, I think we're headed down that road, Phyllis, but I, we're going to get more specific.
Findings have, we, we have to know what these mean. This is what...
We are talking about this, and, and, and they're up, we've, we've talked about them many times. I think it would be good to have a discussion if other people are confused by them, but I think we can talk about our findings, if you'd like. That was one of the reasons to have this meeting. That was not, this, this goes back much longer than a couple months ago, in my mind. This is a review, just to make sure that everybody is connecting the dots between how we conduct business, really, at the commission level. So, so, we have our findings here for design review, we have findings for a lot of other things as well. Now, it's, each individual commission member has to come to their own conclusion about whether a project, when they review it and see all the evidence, whether it meets the findings or not. That's, and that's ultimately, the deliberation part of your discussion is going to get into that, after you've, you've heard the evidence from the public, you've heard the staff report, it's all goes back to, and you, it's not a, you know, it's, it's a lot to take in, but you have to make those sort of determinations. And, and I think, one of the things that I think we can discuss is, is there a way that staff can help sort of facilitate that discussion in a different way? I mean, we, I'm open to discussing that. Like I said, we do generally, what we've done in the past through our presentations is more a summary of, through the discussion part of our staff reports, of how we think, we don't spell it out, one, two, three, four, five. We do that in the draft resolution, but we, in our, in our presentations, we generally focus more on a overview of why we think the findings can be made, and you have to, you know, it's not as explicit of going through specifically the resolution, which has one, two, three, four, five. Now, so there's, that's a point of, now, I've, we've discussed that internally as staff, that's something we think is a decent approach, because it's more understandable, perhaps, in a discussion, to, to talk about the reasons why staff was able to make the findings. But, that's the type of thing I was hoping we would discuss as well. If we want to discuss specifically what these mean, for design review in particular, I do think that we can get into that, it, it sort of segues into the next conversation about design guidelines.
Well, I was just, you know, when I look at this, I say, to me, it's very amorphous, but I'm wondering, when we look at findings, if there should be different findings when you're looking at commercial than when you're looking at residential? Are these things, because the findings are a legal basis, and what you might want in a commercial district, or a mixed-use district, is not necessarily the same as what you want in a residential district.
So let me just kind of address that issue, and more globally, is, the findings are the framework to allow you to ask the questions, to apply the facts to the particular application. But, in addition to findings, and what you may be, you and the, you know, the commission may be looking at, is, in addition to the findings, that, that may need to be modified, that's, you know, part of this discussion or the next. But the additional thing that you are talking about in the next item is guidelines, like design guidelines, which then would be more of the particulars. Are there certain guidelines for commercial? Are there, like, for example, Christmas Tree Hill has their own design guidelines. The question then, not for necessarily, I mean, they are overlapping, but for this portion of the meeting that we're talking about findings, what we're talking about is the bigger picture, the, the findings that are set forth in the code, those may need, that may be something that this commission wants to talk about, amending, but in addition to just the findings, you have that next level, and that next layer of analysis, is what I think I'm hearing from you, Commissioner Metcalf, is setting the criteria and the guidelines for which you rely on to make, to frame the discussion for each of the findings, and that may be where the commission wants to tackle the concept of residential guidelines, commercial guidelines, hillside guidelines, those kinds of things. And Adam has laid it out already, but there's certainly quite a few that Court of Madera has adopted over the year. They're not all codified, or in one place, the, some are policy documents, some are codified as part of the code. So there's two different layers of the discussion tonight. The first, we thought we'd tee up, is not just taking design, but let's just use for a commercial use, or conditional use permit, a CUP, and then, like we said, a variance or any of the other applications, let's use something else besides design. But again, you can then adopt policy, I mean, recommend policy, and then, you know, have it go through the process, by which then you would use specific criteria in which you'd make your findings.
But I, but I think in general, findings, you know, findings are generally, and this speaks to your point, are generally pretty broad. It allow, you know, they're going, I wouldn't call it amorphous, they should be amorphous, but if you look at a conditional use permit, or the state mandated, mandated variance findings, one of the first ones you're always going to have, every project has to conform with the general plan, right? So you're going to have that one. Does it conform with the general plan? Well, as we know, our general plan says a lot of stuff, but it's up to the commission to weigh in balance and determine whether or not it, it, it meets the general plan, and there's certain policies, you know, so that's, that's going to, and that's part of it.
I just want to tee something up here for, that it backs off to a higher level, and that is that we have the general plan, we have a municipal code...
Yes.
...and a zoning code. And, I mean, if you're looking at squares and arrows to decision-making, I mean, that's where this whole thing starts. And to your question is, where do findings come from? They come from the community inferred general plan, the municipal code, and all of that, and then the findings come out of that, they're based on that. Is that not correct, in a way?
Well, yeah, and if you redesign the chapter, for example, design review, or any of the chapters, there's a purpose section of a zoning, you know, design review. It talks about, what is the purpose, why are we writing this part? Why do we have design review in the first place? And it lists, you know, to ensure that new development and the alteration of, or enlargement of existing development occurs in a manner which is consistent with the policy of the general plan. So that you can see, from that purpose comes a finding. We want, in order to meet this purpose and goal of creating this, design review section of the zoning ordinance, we're creating a finding that's going to make that, you know, link the two together, and, and ensure that projects meet that. But it's always going to come down to, you know, a deliberation and a discussion amongst the commissioners, that changes with time and over...
As a new commissioner, I have a question.
Yeah.
Let's do number one. Does it meet the general guidelines, right?
Does it meet the general plan?
General plan. Doesn't meet the general plan. So, if they're asking for a general plan amendment and it doesn't meet what they're... Is that then thrown out as a finding? You know...
Let's even back up to Planning 101. And I don't mean... I mean, I think this is a good discussion, and it dovetails on Chair Chase's question, too, is, so, when you start out with land use and land use principles, the general plan adopted by the town is your guiding principle. As you've all noted, the general plan has many policies, and that's what they are. And the policies can be interpreted in many different ways. But all applications require a finding of consistency with the general plan, not the design guidelines or whatnot, but general plan consistency. So, if you've got a variance, you've got a CUP or whatnot, everything has to find. And what staff will usually do is go through the general plan and pull out policies that they believe, if they're looking for consistency, why a particular project application is consistent with certain general plan policies. What you'll often hear at land use hearings is members of the public who might be not in agreement with that position, coming up with other general plan policies that they believe don't support a particular project or a piece of the application. And then it becomes, I mean, this is the role of the planning commission, is for you folks to listen to the evidence that's presented, review all of the reports before you, go out to the site and view it, and then make your own determination. That's sort of that roadmap that I was talking about, that it's your role. Staff in their staff report and the resolution will give you what they believe is a reasonable interpretation and what they think is allowable under the general plan and the municipal code. But then it becomes... But as Commissioner Metcalf indicated, differing... Different commissioners will have different opinions. And that is your role as a commission, to work through that, voice your opinions, and... But not just things... We've talked about this before. Land use decisions aren't based on, I believe, or I think. It's more that, I heard, I, you know, here's what, you know, we went out to the site and this is what we saw, this is what the report says. Once you weave in the facts that are before you, that's what you base whether you can find that it's consistent with the general plan. But, in the hierarchy, Peter's roadmap is, the general plan is sort of the all-encompassing policy document that guides all the town's decisions. And then, the municipal code, of which the zoning code is a section of the municipal code, then drills down into more specifics for project requirements.
But I think, just to answer Commissioner Lee's question about the general plan, the only... The state law requires that when you modify a general plan, that it's internally consistent with each other, which is, again, you need to make those findings, again. So, it's a sort of a discussion, and you can write a rationale as to why any change to general plan is internally consistent with other sections of it. The other... Other than that, it's really, that's the legislative act of basically policymaking. And presumably, you're making policy in the best interests of the town. And that's, you state those reasons. But it's always good to state the reasons why that is the case.
Thank you for answering that question. I have another, but it's high level. If a commissioner cannot make one of the findings recommended by staff, is one finding not being made enough to reject or put off the... And all the findings have to be made? Or is it just, you know, like...
Ultimately.
Ultimately, it's that you have to make every single one of the findings. The project has to conform to all of them, and you have to... And all the commissioners have to make that.
You would just vote no, even if the other members voted yes.
Right. But let's say, there's two or three sticking points, and I can make findings for three, and the one I'm just not sure about, but, you know, I'm just saying, you know, so I categorically reject it, you know? Like, that's...
No, I mean, you can say the issue, your particular issue, and what you're hung up on in terms of a particular finding that you feel you cannot make. But at the end of the day, if you can't make all of the findings, you're gonna have to say you can't approve the project.
So, let's take the conditional use permit, because it's up. There's three findings that you're supposed to make. And if you can make one and three, that may be your discussion. I can make the findings for one and three. I mean, that's the purpose of the chair, asking each of you for your initial position before anybody makes a motion. And then, a lot of times, what happens in reality is, someone else will say, well, I heard, you know, what your concern was, but here's how I analyzed it, this is why I can make the findings, or this is what I can't. And then it's really incumbent upon the five of you to have that discussion here at the open hearing. It's part of that little trail. Imagine, like, Council and Gretel leaving the little, you know, crumbs and stuff. But really, that is what that discussion is, is to show that understanding of what you heard, why you can or can't make a finding. And then, the five of you reach some sort of a... Or a majority of you making... Reaching some sort of consensus to either approve the project, approve the project with modifications, or deny a project, or continue it for further considerations and stuff. But in what Adam said is, yes, if there are three findings that are required, or two findings, or five findings for a particular application, you have to be able to make all of them.
Right.
But, again, even if initially you can't, it's okay for another commissioner to try and convince you, and based on other facts, and share their opinions as to why you might be able to, you know, change your opinion.
So, I have another question. And deny...
More, and then we'll get to something.
Okay, sorry. In denying, right, addressing denying a project, right? Is there... Is that just that there's no findings? Is there any kind of criteria that would set just pure denial versus allowing the applicant to come back and revise their application? Like, why... Like, is there any instance in which we, you would deny it? Like, what criteria sets that denial?
Well, I don't... I don't want to get too much into specifics, but you can... We have a... I gave you an example of a denial of a resolution. If there... And, at some point, I think there's a... There's a point at which the commissions... You get to a point of where you're seeing if they're going to do what the commission is asking to do, and then the decision needs to be made. An applicant can ask, can request, hey, I want a decision, doesn't... Knowing that maybe it's not gonna work out in terms of approval. But remember, they have... There's appeal rights as well for an applicant as well.
Thank you for clarifying that.
We have faced the condition where, at the commission level, we would rather not see the application be voted on, but the applicant may want it voted on. And it also can be reversed, that we want to say that this is a certainty of the commission, and the applicant may, after hearing things, may be going, oh, my gosh, I wish I could backpedal or not really submit this. But, the game is over. It's up before the commission. We will vote if we can, unless he wants to withdraw his application.
But generally, the commission has given also applicants the opportunity to modify or modify their project, if they so choose.
So...
I had a question. When you're talking about conditional use permits. We had, there was the project next door to this one that you gave us, the example of being turned down, 1421. It was 16 units for sale property. And because it was for sale, it had different requirements than if the same, exact same building, you know, inch per inch had been built for rental. If it was rental, you were allowed so many feet. If it was for sale, it was different. It makes no sense. It's the same building, whether it's rented or sold. And what do you do when you've got code that contradicts each other?
Well, you can... If there's... If you feel that the code doesn't make sense, then there's potential for changing the code.
So, in that case, I mean, there's...
I wouldn't say it doesn't make sense. It just requires you to do certain... It has different setbacks. And there was, at the time it was written, I mean, sometimes you have to go back and look at the code and try to find the original intent, because it's not always clear when you read it.
We couldn't figure it out.
We go through that from time to time, I'll say, as staff. But, there was an intent at some point to put something in the code. And I wouldn't say it's not that it makes sense, but it may not be appropriate anymore, or it's lost its original meaning. I mean, frankly, we... And what we did was, we've done that recently, and again, getting into specifics, but we talked about law coverage. You know, we looked at that requirement, and we said, you know what, we should change it. But that's a totally... That's a different discussion. I mean, that's a zoning ordinance amendment.
I'm talking about findings, because it would have been... It wouldn't have made the findings if it didn't have... If it didn't have the conditional use permit.
Well, the findings were required because it had a... There was a requirement to apply for a conditional use permit. The zoning required it to have a conditional use permit, and therefore, findings, those findings had to be made for that project.
And the findings relate back to the general plan, that specifically stated what a goal was.
Right. Or, in that case, it talked about, you know, there are certain setback differences and whatnot. So, yes, but that... It wasn't the problem with the findings. The findings were the same findings you use for any conditional use permit in town, right? It was... I think you're bringing up a point where you thought it was weird that, or strange, or didn't make sense that they had to apply for a conditional use for permit in the first place.
So, let's...
Anyways.
Let's get Doug.
Doug, what's coming in? I just want to add one thing, which is, kind of, you know, we kind of already talked about how the planning commission, the role of the findings in the planning commission, and how staff discusses these at the hearings. And obviously, in our staff reports, we speak to all these findings, because that's, in many ways, the core of what we do. But even from the, from ground zero, when someone comes in as an applicant, it's important for everyone to understand the role of the findings in that process and how we convey those to the applicant. So, when someone comes in and they wanna build a new house, or do an addition, or, you know, a change of use, or whatever the case may be, one of the requirements in the application is that they speak to the findings. So, we actually put them in that role of having... To be in the position that staff and planning commission will be in. Can you make these findings? It's no surprise to them at the end of the process that, wait, what are these things that we're being judged against? They know it from the very beginning, and staff does... We do our very best to help them to understand the role in that process. So, when someone comes in, we're not just going through, here's your height limit, here's your, you know, the zoning ordinance and those objective standards. We're also saying, hey, in addition, it's very important to consider these things, and these are the reasons why. You know, and finding three, for instance, that, for in-design review, that has to do with view impacts and those sort of things, we explain, you know, this is the way that this is evaluated. So, when you think about impacts to your neighbors, et cetera, this is, in order for your project to be approved, the decision maker will have to say this in the affirmative. So... Yeah, to approve it and justify it. So, I just wanted to add that, that design review findings and any findings are really, you know, staff incorporates those from the very beginning with applicants. And so, they're, you know, we do our best to highlight them throughout the process, so that they're no mystery to anyone. So, thanks.
Okay, so you've got a...
Anything else on this item?
Well, I think Judith's handout here, you know, about state law, and it simply says, findings are required whenever a city acts in a non-legislative manner, as opposed to its legislative capacity. So, we're required, when we're not making legislative decisions, to utilize findings to create a decision.
And I think it goes on to say, even when you are doing legislative acts, it's probably a good idea to state why you're making new laws, so.
So, even when a proposed ordinance comes to planning commission and certain council, and you can see as we... What goes in the code, there is typically a purpose. Those are really the findings, and that is usually the justification or the explanation. The other thing is...
Yeah, just want... And just to point out, I mean, that specific example was the MX-1 district. That was a whole new... That had all-purpose section. And it related back to our... Related back to existing findings, but it also had some other... Long, in the resolution section, had a long explanation about why the commission, and then ultimately the council, was adopting the new ordinance.
And just so that everybody understands that, keep in mind that when... If a ordinance like that is adopted, what actually ends up in the printed code is just the section that is what's called the codified portion of the ordinance. But the whole purpose and the whole findings section isn't necessarily published. There may be a short purpose paragraph, but all of the findings that go into and the rationale to adopt a new piece of legislation, like a zoning ordinance, isn't published in the municipal code, but is always available as part of the ordinance on file with the town clerk, and is part of the final record. But that's not the published part, so that you have to understand that there may be... And when Adam or Doug or Phil say that, oh, we've done research, a lot of times, they'll go back and look at what the whole ordinance... And, I mean, certainly now, and like Adam said, the section and the recent one, the MX, was extensive. I mean, we asked you folks to, you know, really adopt the rationale, council discussed it and things, so that we can lay that trail for those that come after us, to really understand what the commission and council were thinking at the time that it was adopted. I think the hardest thing for staff right now, and the planners will probably tell you this, is that we'll pull an old ordinance, and it's just the codified section, and it's anybody's guess sometimes. We try and go back to the staff report to see if that gives any kind of history or understanding. And sometimes you folks ask for that, you know, why is this the way it is? And sometimes we have that, sometimes we don't, in the town records. And I will give credit to the planning staff, as they take a great deal of time to try and lay all that out in their staff reports and in their resolutions, so that there is that trail, that they're leaving that legacy.
And I'll just leave on this, if... That if there... When you get our staff reports, if there are questions that... Or things that may be research-oriented, or other pieces of information that you think would be, is important to enabling, as an individual, you from evaluating the findings, you can let us know, and we can try to bring that to the meeting, so that everybody also has that information, is available for everybody.
I think you made a good point, that I've thought of at times. When we get our folders on Friday and go through it, if we have any questions about process, about... We should give you a call on Monday morning and not wait until the public hearing and ask you and expect you to have an answer. I think we should all be encouraged to contact you on Monday, if there are things, when we read through the folder, that we want to know about process or something to be clarified. That doesn't mean we don't discuss it at the hearing, but it at least gives you time to get the background information and answer the question.
Absolutely.
And if you go out to the site on a Tuesday morning, and you still have a question before Tuesday night, planning staff, I'm available on, you know, Mondays and Tuesdays before hearing, so that you can ask those questions. And typically, when we get those kinds of questions, that we'll share that information at the hearing. Planning commissioners have asked the following, because it's important that all of you have all the same information, and that that's before you and the public at the time that you are contemplating your decision.
All right. So, with the rest of this findings discussion, where do you want to go with this now?
No, I don't think there's any intent to really go anywhere, but it was sort of an opportunity, again, to... Hopefully, I think we all, there was some... Helped understand the connections and the roles, and answer some questions that you may have had.
Yeah. I appreciate just the collection of items that you gave us in our packets to read as a refresher, as being part of the agenda and the discussion, allowing a broader discussion with the public about some of the processes that we go through, which they might not have access to.
Well, and actually...
And just as a teeing off that, one of the items was available on the back table and presented to you tonight, was just some sample findings. And, again, one is from Court of Madera, and two are from other jurisdictions, not to... Madera, and two are from other jurisdictions, not to say any are better or worse, it was just to give you the showing, I'll give you the example on the attachment that we gave you tonight, was Monterey County from 2005, don't know if they do it, but it was, it showed, here's the finding you have to make, and then it shows, their planners laid out what the evidence is, that you could support that finding. And, again, it's just to show that process of what your thinking should be as you read a staff report, as you are here at the hearing, it's okay to take notes. I mean, sometimes you're going to hear something from an applicant, or a member of the public, that you might want to incorporate into the findings. Before, tonight, Adam and I were talking about this, saying that a lot of times, what you hear may, you certainly come in very well-prepared before the hearing, and an idea of where you, individually where you're going, not collectively, but individually. But part of the process of having applicants and members of the public and the community input is to listen, and if you hear something that night that's not in the staff report, but that either supports your, you can rely on that to either support a finding to approve a project, modify a project, or deny a project, then by all means, take notes, discuss that when it comes back to the commission. Maybe that that's part of your motion is to include an additional fact to support a finding that wasn't in the written draft resolution from the staff, that's certainly within the commission's prerogative. And again, you'd be encouraged to, as you go through the staff report, take notes, when you go out to a site visit, if you're seeing something upon which you want to rely on, then by all means, you know, make sure that's noted, share that with your commissioners, if it's a photo, I mean, some of you have done that, make sure we've got copies, so that that's available for the staff and the public. And then if you hear something that night at the public comment period, then by all means, that's something that's, could be, if the commission wants to incorporate it into the final resolution.
Okay, so, you know, I, you guys always do a good analysis and a response to the findings, and I recall that in Monterey, that they do this, finding and evidence, evidence, evidence is an initial document, and before a hearing takes place, they actually go through and say, conclusion, 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 and get to a statement that the commission can look at and say, okay, there's staff's opinion on it, this is a, sort of a precursor to, you know, an issue of things where, and you guys do the same thing, you say, here's what we find as a result of that. It's stated in the offense appeal tonight, you came to a conclusion about it, and we take that into consideration. Jennifer, any other questions?
I think, Adam, you asked if we wanted things presented differently by staff, I think overall, you guys do a really good job.
Thanks.
Of laying everything out, so I don't have any improvements to be made in the way that the information's presented, and how it relates back to the findings.
Yeah, I think the staff reports you've received the last couple of years since you came, Adam, really, and with the staff who work with you, really give us information, and if you compare ones from six or seven years ago, and now you see the amount of information that's there for the record.
Dr. Bundy, any thoughts?
No, good presentation, thank you.
I think that, you know, overall, we sit here, and many nights, we get a set of findings, as Adam mentions, that a applicant, or an appellant, or two opposing parties bring to the table parts of the general plan, that can be in conflict, and wherever you fall with your need is the place where you make the finding. And that's really where our conflict arises sometimes, is what do we believe, or what is more paramount? And I think that may be where assistance is needed sometimes, in determining, what is the higher, you know, level of finding, where do we go, what do we reach to, what do we look for to say, this supersedes the other finding, and what are the circumstances of it? And so, the evidence is what we have to go to. But I think that's our biggest struggle, is when there are attorneys, and people who say, yeah, but, the other finding over here says, you know, you must do this with regard to this issue, and, you know, we have to decide what it is we're going to take on, and then, that's, that's our problem to solve. I don't think there's any other way around.
And we're here to assist as well, I mean, to try to help.
But that's where we get to sitting here going, oh, this is hard, but we have to decide at that moment, what is, what is it that we want to abide by?
Right.
It doesn't mean necessarily that the other finding should be disregarded, it simply says that we're choosing to go with a finding of more greater.
Right, and I think that, I think the actual real, sometimes, the trickier part is where there's information provided that isn't, doesn't actually relate, also, to some of the findings that need to be made, and to the purview of the commission, what you're really considering in terms of being able to approve a project or not. And oftentimes, that will get into the record as well, and the sifting through sort of some of that information.
Phil?
Yeah, I was looking at two, having to do with removal of trees, and we've gotten into this a few times.
Well, and the key word here is unnecessarily, right?
Yes, right, and the reason I'm bringing up is, I remember a couple, I don't remember the exact, you know, information, but there's been a couple of times when neighbors and people have objected to trees being taken down, because, you know, if the tree was left up, it would be right in the middle of a room, and they want the house, because it's usually a house, moved over eight feet, let's say, and to save the tree. And the applicant says, I don't want the house over eight feet, because then it affects my view, or it affects this, or it affects, you know, my having a swimming pool, whatever. How do you look to see what, how do you define unnecessarily, you know, how do you decide what takes precedence? And this is where I can be looking at it, and let's say Jennifer's looking at it, and she thinks, oh, well, it isn't necessary to remove the tree, and I feel it is, and yet we're looking and needing the same information.
At the same information, and the same information.
So, it brings to mind a question as to the principles of property ownership, and that's not something that is necessarily within-
But you all bring that to your, to the table from a different perspective.
Right, so, property ownership is a, and what comes with it, and-
And the rights of it.
And ultimately, the commission acts as a body, will determine where the, you know, sort of the town's flavor of that, you know, that bigger picture discussion about, you know, where you fall in the spectrum, I guess, in terms of, you know, favoring the property owner, consideration of neighbor, you know, all those things get caught up in those decisions.
Or the best interest of the town, could be, now, just taking this thing I'm kind of making up, but it happens all the time, you know, in all towns, let's say, we, say the house can go where the applicant wanted it, and, or let's say we, make it even more interesting, say, we turn it down, we will not approve it, it doesn't make the findings with the house in location A. So then, the applicant has the right to appeal it to the council, and that's what's called the de novo hearing. And I'm wondering, when there is a de novo hearing, even though they, the council starts fresh, which is what de novo kind of means, they're still looking at what we looked at, and what our conclusions. How much, I don't want to say power, how much does it mean, and should, when it goes forward to the council, the recommendation, should there be a recommendation from staff as to how they, the council should relate to it? Should there be like three options, you can do A, B, or C, like we had tonight, or is there one? I mean, I don't, I, you see what I'm asking, how, how you move it through the process.
If anybody's been following council, that's been a question that's been recently asked at the council. And you go back to the code about how the appeals section is written, and it's not just, so, council, when, when the, when the code that gives the council authority to hear it, it clearly provides that the council can, they get the record, they get all that happened before, so that's like a staff decision, a planning commission, whatever is in the record, that's what we talked about, the evidence, the minutes, that reflects the oral, and all the writings, and things like that. But it's very clear that it says, and take new, you know, and consider, I don't have the code right in front of me, but they, the language in it that we're all looking at, and that was recently discussed at council, is the language that says, and consider, you know, what, what is said and presented at the council hearing, which means by default that they then get to consider this matter new, they get to hear all the evidence, they can rely on all the evidence that came before, and then they either can affirm, modify, or deny, similar to what you're allowed to do under, under that. So, all that, the record is there for the council, is to show what happened before, they're not obligated to be bound by it, it certainly is, the code just requires that information to be transmitted to them.
All right, so there would be no recommendation from staff to be, to back the conclusion?
No, well, so this is, this is in practice, this is sort of like the should and the practice, and what is, what do we, what do we actually, I mean, we have, we have written, when we go to the council, we have written staff reports that say, yeah, here's what the planning commission did, we're recommending that you go with that, but it, it can change, I mean, sometimes, and the council ultimately will be the ones that sets the course for what they want to see at some point, you know, so, so I don't know if there is a should, it's sort of, that's what we're all, that's, it's up to, it's up to us to decide what it is.
All right, a couple of years ago, with the tower, town center, which was before your time, but, we turned it down at our level, went to the council, it was appealed by town center ownership, whoever owns that. Three of the five council members at the time, specifically asked of the staff person, planning, did you feel it met the findings? By asking that question, it's almost like a setup for the council to vote however the commission did, and that's why I'm asking, because if findings are legal and reading, and I really appreciate this legal paper you put in the back, oh, I, well, I figured the legal came from you, but whatever it is, whatever, all right, the thing about the law, the part, and I am wondering how neutral staff should be when it goes to that next level, I mean, give, show the record of what the commission did, but be neutral in how it is presented, you know, recommendations should be neutral to the council, so, council members, and this was different members on the council, and this is six, five years ago, whatever, the tower for town centers, and the elephant and all that stuff, how do you rely, say, well, gee, if the commission made the findings, then, yeah, of course, I'll go along.
I think this is a bigger, this is more about process and relationship between the council, so I don't think it's directly related.
Well, it's how we relate to findings.
It's, it's not really, I mean, I mean, I, I think, we come out and we say, we'll always be in the record, as, when anything goes to the council, that if staff made a recommendation, that's in the record. If planning commission made a recommendation, that's in the record. If there's a nuance, I mean, if you're describing sort of a nuance in the way that the presentation is made to the council, that's, that's, that's a sort of a decision on a departmental level from, from, from the planning department, about how we approach it, but it's also, we would, you know, we're happy to take direction from the council, if they would like to see things presented in a certain way, the way that we're discussing, how do we want to present you with our staff reports? So, those things, it doesn't, it is just a practice, an internal sort of bureaucratic way of, or governing, I mean, in a sense of how we make those decisions, it's not, there's no set way, or should, or shouldn't, I think there's many examples of it working many different ways.
Well, that's what I'm saying, sometimes you see the three options, so, yes, no, or-
Well, that's always there.
With changes, and sometimes you see the recommendation to, I don't know the exact proper legal word, but you back the decision of the commission, and yet it's supposed to be a de novo hearing, and that's why I wondered, because it's the same findings, the same wording for findings, and how you relate to it at different levels.
Just to dovetail on what Adam said, that's a policy-level decision between the manager and the council, as to what the council wants to see, and each council will be, I mean, that's not governed by state law, that'll be ever-changing between the council and the manager, who will then, you know, give direction to the planning department as to what the council wants to see, and things like that. By state law, but for planning commission, you'll always see, at least, especially like if it's an appeal, you'll see what the staff decision was, but on planning commission reports, I mean, generally, you will see the benefit of, on most of them, staff will make a recommendation every once in a while, that from a policy-level decision, that between the manager and the planning department, and, you know, certainly the planning director's input, every once in a while, planning commission will get a staff report that'll say, discuss and direct, and there won't be a recommendation, there won't be draft findings, because we're looking for, for input from the community and planning commission before that information is there, and you've had some of those, even in the last two years since we've been on board, that generally, you will, and then council, always, by state law, will see what came before, and then again, some things they hear, because they're the final decision-makers, and sometimes they hear things on appeal, so they have a variety of roles, and so what goes to them may be determined on a policy level based on their role. If their role is the final decision-maker, it may be one thing, and if their role's as an appeal, you know, hearing body, it may be a different format, so, and that'll depend on what they've asked the manager for.
All right, I think we've gotten to a good ending point here, so, let's see if we can move to the next item then. Do you want to take a five-minute break?
Do you want to get any comments from the public?
That's a good point, I did neglect that, yes. So, we have some public here, and I don't know if either member of the public would like to comment about this. I'm not joking, no, Jane, I wouldn't joke about that.
I just, off the record-
Please, no, you can't, you-
I just wanted to relate you all to the parole board over at the prison, it's very interesting, because there's a lot of similarities.
That's, that needs to be on the record, right?
Less than I open.
We're a parole board now.
We are, yeah. Fascinating. I had, I will refrain, so, please.
Better to be a member of the parole board than the person applying for the parole, okay?
That said, how about those design guidelines?
How about a five-minute break?
Yeah, but let's do that, let's take a five-minute break, so, yeah. All right, let's get back on the record here, and let's go into design guidelines, discussion of existing Corte Madera design guidelines, and possible appointment of a subcommittee to review, discuss, and potentially propose design criteria for planning commission consideration. Dr. Wolf?
Thank you, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for this item, but, just to start, I think this is something that, well, I'll, I'll start with the commissioners, I think individual commissioner members, in particular Chairman Chase, Vice Chairman Kaff, have raised their desire to see more explicit attention paid to the goal of achieving better design, and have requested that an exploration of potentially new design guidelines, or supplemental design guidelines, and/or standards be undertaken. So, that's some of the genesis here, I think, obviously, design has always been, I think, a high priority for this commission, and commissions going back, as expressed in sort of the 2009 general plan, where in that document- where in that document, there was a community, community design element adopted, which goes into great detail about the, the desire and the goals and, and the intent to go further down the road of making sure that the town really achieves a high level of design standards. So, but I think, I think it's fair to say that while we have that, general, those general plan policies, we also have adopted design guidelines and have design standards in our existing zoning codes for specific areas of town, and frankly, for all projects subject to design review. Some of these criteria haven't really been focused on as much by staff or the commission in its project reviews. So, and, and I think part of that is that we've talked about, they are sort of scattered around. There's a lot to get through, whether we're talking about findings or whatnot in individual projects. They haven't been at the fore. And I think some of that can be explained as well, just by their, we're all pretty much adopted in the early 90s or even earlier, going back to the late 70s for the San Clemente and Paradise Drive specific plan in that particular case. But however it may be, I mean, the, I think this item is really presented tonight to have a discussion about really the utility of, of design guidelines, our existing ones, and potentially whether, you know, how far this commission wants to go. It doesn't want to go further in appointing a subcommittee to explore the possibility of creating new design guidelines or supplemental design guidelines. So with that in mind, that's sort of the tee-up. We have put in a, I put in as attachments our existing design guidelines. I put in the community design element where expressly talks about creating new design lines. And then I also put in some examples from other cities of other design guidelines more, just to give you a sense of that, there's a variety of different types of guidelines out there. You can, some are based on residential, some are based on commercial, some are based on mixed use, some are in addition. There's a great deal of variety in terms of the detail and depth of the scope of work, for example, of a design, creating design guidelines. Some are more bulleted principles and that are more general in nature. Others can be very detail-oriented with photos and more prescriptive. Although I will say guidelines at the end, the, end of the day, in general, in most cases, are really there to provide design advice to property owners and architects as well as to town staff and decision makers when considering development approvals. So they will always generally still require discretion. They're not going to be codes, they're not going to be the development standards. As we were in our last discussion, they're going to be, they're going to be guidelines within that, within which perhaps the commission could utilize them to help make certain findings, for example, or some ordinances that I've looked at basically just have a separate document and they create a finding, zoning ordinance amendment, to create a finding that would say, all developments shall comply or conform with the design guidelines. You know, so it's, it's, in the same way we talked about at the last meeting, that all developments shall conform with the general plan or the zoning ordinance. It's another thing, you know, another, another item on that list. Currently, I, I do want to make the, you know, I think, I have a, written here in the staff report, you know, one of the things that I, I feel that could be the most significant benefits of design guidelines is, for us, is that they would consolidate and make explicit what the towns, planning commission considers important design-related criteria in one place, provide access to such criteria to all stakeholders early in the application process, and advance the real and perceived importance of design quality with, within and outside of Corte Madera community. And I should say, that's not, I've, I have discussed this with Peter and Phyllis previously as they've raised some concerns more publicly at the town council level, and I'll let Peter and Phyllis discuss that. But, so it's not, I think that's sort of a collective consensus on that potential benefit of, of moving down the road towards actually revisiting design guidelines. So I, I've sort of left this as, the, the purpose here would be to discuss whether it's worth exploring further the development of design guidelines. And if so, it might be helpful to have some discussion about the general type of guidelines that believes should be pursued based on examples. But also, the, the main thing here would be whether, well, the appointment of a sub, potentially the appointment of a subcommittee to develop a work plan, conduct additional research, and potentially propose design criteria for planning, planning commission consideration. And with that, I just, I'll, I'll sort of open it up. There's a lot of, we, I included, not only in the staff report, but today, I think I had a couple additional handouts, this guy and one from Phyllis, which was, which was this one, which Phyllis handed out. And it's also in the back.
And that one that I'd given you.
Oh, right, and there's this one on Hamilton. So a lot of different examples. I think they show just the wide variety of documents that can be created. It shows sort of the language, the different ways that language can be created in those guidelines. And potentially just is an opportunity to sort of help this discussion, you know, further in terms of, is this something, how do you want to see this play out and move forward?
So with that said and introduced nicely, Adam, as chair, I will put it out there that Phyllis and I have found that we think that there's opportunities here for clarification of design guidelines for the town. And that it's in the 5.6, which simply says that design guidelines, you know, adopt, it says implementation program CD 1.1A, adopt and apply design guidelines applicable throughout the town. And so there was an intent to allow the department, the commission, and so forth to follow up on a number of general plan items, but that was specific to creating design guidelines that are more specific. And so there are some specific areas with design guidelines, but I'm going to check in with each of you because we think there's opportunity to create more information and more criteria by which we can assess any given design. And, and it's put out there for the applicants to witness, to understand, and say that this is the criteria by which their application will be viewed. And they have the choice to abide by it or not. And the staff may even have the opportunity to say, this doesn't even fit within design guidelines. We won't accept the application. People can still say, I want to submit it regardless. But knowing that they're going to come before a body that has a set of enhanced guidelines, again, it won't have legality, but it will be a basis of information that we can use to review. So with that, Dr. Bundy, are you in agreement with that sort of intent and assessment?
I'm in total agreement.
All right, that's succinct. All right. Ms. Freeman?
I think it's worth exploring further. I think, you know, design is very much in the eye of the beholder. I think we've seen that through the commission. And I think it's finding that balance of guidance. But I also think sometimes if you try to define something and, you know, you can over, try to overdefine it and, and it ends up either not making sense or not leaving enough room for sort of interpretation and application. I mean, my observation is that we've probably had more disagreements in general on the commercial projects that have come before the commission, the residential projects. I think, you know, we've gotten into discussions around, you know, certain roof lines and things like that. But I feel like those have been a little bit easier to opine on. And generally speaking, I think, you know, as we're seeing turn of housing stock and people improving their, their own homes, generally the design has been of high quality. So I have less concerns about, you know, really broadening the residential guidelines, although it is ironic that I'm looking at this now and again, and I had a question mark next to the single-story designing being encouraged. That said, I think one of the sort of criticisms I would make of something that I see happen with us on the commission, particularly on the commercial things, is that if we feel strongly, and I appreciate, again, Phyllis, you bringing up a lot of this stuff and demanding sort of a higher bar, I think what you're trying to do is demand a higher bar of, of excellence in design, which I think is a good thing. I think where we fall short sometimes on the commission is not saying enough upfront on the commercial projects about designs that we are not enthusiastic about. And as it goes on longer, as, as we all know, you know, even though, as I read over what's a finding, that the, the cost associated with the work should not play a role in our making a finding or not or granting a variance. But, you know, I think generally speaking, when, when applicants come before us, they want to improve projects, right? And everyone wants to have an attractive project and everyone wants to work well with the community and with the planning commission to get their projects approved. So I think where we've fallen short is not coming out strongly enough in the very beginning when we are having these study sessions and such about sort of the bar that we want to raise the designs to and making that very clear upfront. So I don't know that that gets articulated much more clearly through guidelines. I think that there's definitely room for improvement, but I think it's more in how it's communicated to the applicants really than, than anything else in certain instances.
Before we go to Charles, I do want to say that I agree with you on that getting in the verbiage out front is something we could do more of. And I think that what this would do, or I would hope it would do, is give us more tools to point to and more examples by which we can say something does or does not conform.
Yeah.
Or, you know, rather than searching or trying to say, you know, more like blah, blah, blah. And that doesn't necessarily move the dial. But if the applicant looks at stuff in their initial packet that says, here are examples of the design guidelines that the town has and the commission has, they will see that perhaps their commercial project doesn't meet those things. And they have a choice then, and we have a choice when it comes before us to point to that and say, hey, guys, it's not meeting that. So right now, it's pretty wide open and amorphous.
I think I'll say the other, as I went through the various examples, you know, I think with design in particular, like a picture says a thousand words. So I think one of the things we might think about as we do this, instead of getting like really caught up in all the verbiage around it, like almost creating inspiration boards where maybe we have, you know, this is sort of the look and feel of what goes on on Christmas Tree Hill. This is the look and feel of Old Town. Because Corte Madera in particular, it's kind of a weird town, right? Like, we don't have, we don't.
We chose it.
I mean, I love it here, but we don't have a main, we don't have a main street. We don't have like a lark spur where we have a main street or like where I grew up in the East Bay. There's a main street. So there is more continuity to that street because all the buildings relate in some way to this one street. We have very different feels between, you know, Old Town is very small. And in fact, like before I moved here, I didn't, when people would say like, oh, yeah, there's a down, there's a quote-unquote downtown to Corte Madera, it's Old Town. I'm like, what are you talking about? There's two buildings there. How is that, that's not, you know what I mean? And so, so I, I sort of feel like, and even it could start with like photos of what currently exists in these areas, but then you have the mall, which is a, or the two malls, you know, which have a completely different look and feel than Old Town, Corte Madera versus, you know, Paradise Drive and the design guidelines that have been developed over there. So I almost feel like this could maybe become something where we have these like inspiration boards, and I don't know that we have the budget to, you know, hire a designer to sort of opine on, you know, and then we have the Tamil Vista corridor, right, which is a whole new project and will continue to be sort of a slew of projects. But thinking holistically about the continuity of those sort of different pockets and how the designs may or may not relate to each other, I think, could be helpful.
Well, before Mr. Lee speaks, that is very much in our minds is that illustrations will actually speak louder than words in some cases and provide a myriad of examples of what the words might mean and different ways of applying the words. So the words can mean, you know, step-back façades can mean a dozen different things.
Right.
But by having a few images of things, yes, that would be, I think, a necessary component to it. And I appreciate you're acknowledging the diversity of what we have here and that whatever we develop would then have to be as diverse as the conditions are in the town to some degree. So Philip, what's your thought?
So thank you once again for putting together such an elaborate package.
Charles, I'm sorry.
Thanks for putting together the package. You know, I think it, it very clearly laid out what the city has already in place. You know, I think the 5.0 community design, the different issues that they brought forward that they would like further development on is a, is a good roadmap. I also further Jennifer's cause with not being so restrictive on residential. I think that there's such a diverse housing stock that's been built up through the years and modified that there is no unique character that could be defined, even in certain areas. I mean, you know, I think, I guess, you know, I, I didn't move into a neighborhood that had, you know, design guidelines and I really appreciated my ability to express myself and have my own castle. And so I don't really want to impose that on other people and tell them how they should live their lives. However, I do feel that commercial properties are the purview of the public. And by their very nature, they engage and, and the scale of them and everything else is at a different degree of scrutiny. And I think that it is our right to, to define how we want to build as a city at the commercial level. And other, other instances, so I think outside, there's non-residential design guidelines that talk about bike trails and other things for guidelines that I think we can agree on as a community. I think it's just a very treacherous slope to, to get into guidelines unless, I'll, I'll give you an example. The, the Mill Valley guidelines specifically talk about requirements for retaining walls because of slope issues and setbacks in that to create a better community feel, right? And it's not really a personal judgment about how to design it. It's just, you know, and, and so if we can find things within the residential design guidelines that define that, that, that would not be, you know, I don't like red, so nobody can paint their house red, but is more specific to, I like, you know, I, it, it creates this 10-foot wall. You can't create a 10-foot wall because it's just, the massing is incorrect, you know, for, for public, personal experience, right? That's all I ask in evaluating and creating those guidelines is a more loose interpretation. The other thing I didn't like about some of the examples, I like the pictures. However, they had good examples and bad examples. And once, once again, that becomes subjective. And since it's non-enforceable, you're kind of, you know, it, I would just like to say, what is, is... of, you know, I would just like to say what is, what should be encouraged, or what is currently existing. I think just taking a housing stock of what's there, you know, is important. I guess, you know, I think overall, it would be a very valuable exercise, because I personally have already commented on some design elements, and there isn't a huge degree of backup besides just, you know, about perhaps why I came to those conclusions, right? And I think, but, you know, I think that that needs to be a collective thing. I don't, you know, how, is there going to be community hearings on it?
It would be.
And, you know, that it's a very open and permeable process.
Well, it'd be, so let me just say that, you know, what we're not proposing to do is something like Carmel, which has incredibly strict guidelines, and the window sizes, the appearance of the eaves, everything is under strict review of Carmel. And Mill Valley itself has pretty strict guidelines, for the most part, that they enforce. So that's not what we've been thinking, and we feel that, and I think Phyllis has voiced it very articulately and often, that the higher level of design aesthetic, design quality, awareness of it, needs to be brought to the town. We're no longer the sleepy little Carmel, I mean, Corder Madera, and we have to pay attention to the fact that there's a lot more money here, there's a lot more interest in the town, there's a lot more people moving here, there's a lot more development, it's all coming to bear. And I think it's incumbent upon us as a commission to come up with the right material to evaluate the projects. And what we have discussed is that if we have these three options that he's put before us, is that we create a subcommittee, or we do more meetings like this one, or we don't do anything at all. So item, option three is off the table, since we all agree we need to go further. Option two and one, then talk about either doing more of this, or we have a subcommittee created that would come back with various elements. Ultimately, all of this will go through a full public hearing process and a outreach that allows people to take participation in informal hearings, like we did at the Tamil Vista Corridor, as well as the full gamut of public hearings, but--
And approval by the council at the end.
Yeah, and approval by the council. So there's going to be no shortage of public input into this. But with that said, you know, I don't think what we had in mind is restrictive, it's informative, and it's enhancing in providing more guidance and more backup for what decisions we all have to make and give us some ammunition. So before I make my next statement, does anybody else want to say anything? Phyllis, do you want to jump in?
Do you want me to give you just a little, how I got to sitting down, talking to Peter and Adam about all this? I was looking at a major project we had going for three years. Okay, we all know that. And I was wondering, what are we doing? It's not only the money that it was costing, it was the time, the aggravation on the applicant's part, our part, et cetera. And having some discussions with Dick Spotswood, who happens to be a personal friend, about architectural design, design problems we have. And then wherever I go, whenever anybody brings up bad design or mistakes were made, we hear wind cup. And in fact, A-Bag, for those who are new on the commission, who gave the wrong numbers of how many units had to be developed, that created wind cup. Now, when they have statewide meetings and stuff, they have slides they show of wind cup as being an example of what not to do.
Because of the design, or because--
Because of the design.
The density.
The density.
But also the design, the blockage of it, the colors that we use, the effect that it has. So I started looking into this, and I thought, we need to have guidelines, a booklet of guidelines. And I saw it in three areas. Residential is, you know, Charles said, and you said it, you know, it's pretty cut and dry. We've got mixed use, and we have commercial. And as I looked, I found out in Massachusetts and a couple of other states back east, it's state law that they have to have a design guideline thing. And one of the things that I had Adam send you today was, this was a template that was used, and Adam, the one from Bedford, if you can find it, you ought to send it to everybody. I'll send it to you again. The town that actually used it. So I went before the town council three times, starting in May, talking about this need that we had. And I looked at, and then if you remember the statement that I read at the meeting, when we talked, the last time we had the hotel in front of us, I talked about the elements of design. And then Peter and I worked on it, and you'll see this little thing, well, mine is in a packet, but I handed out to you tonight. I put the thing from Frank Lloyd Wright on the top because he was a genius, and he did have a sense of humor, and yet it makes sense what he says about doctors' mistakes.
Oh, we should talk.
But--
Go ahead.
That doctors can bury their mistakes, that's all, you never made a mistake, so you don't have to bury anybody. We know that, but not like you. You know that, Bob. But, and not every architect's Frank Lloyd Wright either. But what we're looking for in good design and in using it and putting something together, because, Jennifer, you made a good point. When you say, I think it should be this, you have to back it. We need something where we can back, well, the reason I think we should have such and such is because of this. Now, this is a tool. This isn't law, like an ordinance, this is not law, and it isn't in any state, law like a finding. It is a tool that helps you get to a finding, get, follow the ordinances. I found some stuff in a book, and then I, I mean, I wrote the stuff up, I got the pictures out of a book, that shows you if you just follow the zoning ordinances, as far as the setback and all this, what you get and what happens if you have design guidelines, what you can create. And one is an example of duplex, and the other is adding an addition on the rear or something. But it just showing what the difference is between design guidelines and, you know, if you have something. We have some major projects coming here. And I'm very selfish when it comes to my town. I love my town. I want us to be known as something other than the town that has wind cup. And as I say, we have some very good major projects that are certainly worth looking at and considering and discussing and having them go through the process. If this is what we want when they come before us, because they actually have not, well, one we did have a workshop on, we have, and change is difficult for people, we have got to be able to say, well, I think this would be good because, and have stuff. Now, one of the things where I disagreed with something you said, Charles, is the negative, the negative. If you look at this one, see, I even had him a punch, and you chose mostly the residential ones. Most of what I collected from around the country are commercial and stuff like that. If, you know, the ones back east have a lot of historical stuff they want to keep. We don't have that. If anything's 30 years old in California, you tear it down and start again, it seems. But they, what they say is not acceptable, discouraged, is malls, you know, stiff malls and stuff. And when you do it with commercial, it's not as personal as with residential. And that's why you can do it, to show, we don't, it says, you know, avoid, not miss walls with little architectural detail.
Right. So I'm glad you brought that up, and I don't think we're in disagreeance on that specifically. Mine was residential, and I--
Yeah, and I agree with you.
I just want to bring up that as part of the community design, there is one about a definition of corporate architecture, and basically saying that the community doesn't want to see those.
Exactly.
And so it's a perfect place to put that type of information.
Yes, right.
And not in conflict with where we're trying to better our community and other guidelines, right? But just a guy, like, it's separate, not saying, it's either this or that, right? It's either modernism or cottage, you know--
Yeah, no, it's, it's the idea of what is good design and what isn't. That's why, as I say, the elements of good design, and as an architect, you learned this in school, just as I did. And I also put in, just so you could see, in this little packet I made, the last statement I made before the city council, because what I had been asking them at the time was, I mean, because of the criticism they have gotten over wind cup, it doesn't go away, unfortunately, that for them to go on record of making a statement, it wasn't a legal resolution or anything, and people misunderstood it, to make a statement of, we backed the elements of good design, we encourage the planning commission to work forward, you know, use these type of things as tools when you go forward. And I guess the attorneys got nervous about doing it and said, you come through the planning commission first, which is what we're trying to do. There are two architects in town who have already expressed interest in being advisory, if we have some, you know, what they've seen, who have worked on things, and they're the same ones who worked with Adam when he was working on increasing the lot coverage from 34 to 40, you know, who gave you some input and came to our meeting that night. But it's, this is going to be a long process. Peter and I have got research like this, we dumped it on poor Adam, and we were hoping that we could put stuff together. We've talked to the commission. Now we'd like to put some stuff together, to bring stuff back to the commission, to keep on seeing and reach a point where we're all comfortable with it. And then, if you remember what we did with the consultants with the corridor, the Tamil Vista Corridor, have the public meetings, get input from the public, which will make changes, and things will be adapted, and eventually, it will be adopted, just like the general plan was, you know, in the sense of, by the council, as their approval of, these are the guidelines. And they should be in the three sections. Residential's pretty easy, because there's a lot in here already, then mixed use and commercial. And I think I hit it all.
Yeah, I just think we're a little bit, we're going to take it one step at a time.
Just explaining what a process would be, what--
But in terms of just making those decisions about what these are going to be, I think the idea is that if the commission, you know, the subcommittee could be formed, therefore it's not, frankly, it's not such a burden to staff that on a regular basis at a commission level, it actually is helpful for staff in that regard, and allows for a little bit more flexibility, I think, to actually do the research and come up with things and meet on an informal basis, pull in, you know, comments and whatnot. But I think that one of the first things would be, I would look to do, would be to work with a subcommittee on a work plan and sort of laying out what, the points at which we'd come back to the commission and discuss steps along the way. So it's not, and then the whole public process, and et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know if that's, I think there's many different ways you could do it and be successful at it, but I think ultimately, and there's, the scope of what we do as well is still yet to be determined in terms of consultants and whatnot. Obviously, that becomes a bigger question mark for, in terms of resources and whatnot.
I would hope we wouldn't have to pay consultants if not necessary.
It should be determined.
And I also hope that, what was it, Hillsborough's is 159 pages long, I found that, or places around the state. Sloan Bailey was back in Nantucket, and because of what I had said for the council, he checked Nantucket, theirs is 179 pages. We don't need that.
So fellow commissioners, it is, it would be our hope that you would allow Phyllis and I to be a subcommittee to bring back through staff and through you guys, this outline of work and outline of where we're going and what it is, and start that process.
Things to talk about.
I'm supportive.
And that we would-- Say what?
You can't have more than two.
So--
You don't want the Brown Act involved.
So, but we would be taking our material to the planning department, to Adam.
I work with Adam.
Yeah, and so then you all are closely involved at that point.
No, I think, look, I mean, I think there's a lot of, I've included the community design element, because, I mean, it's basically, the whole chapter is devoted to creating, you know, to flushing this out in a little bit more detail. So I think it is important that it was clear, that's an intent. It's come up from even just a perception level. I think, frankly, there's a lot of good design in Corder Madera, and people do high-quality projects, but, but there's value to it. I think staff's happy to advance this as well and work with Peter and Phyllis on--
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment. People are wondering that here is the general plan, and here are all the things that were supposed to be taken care of. This was nine years ago, and Adam's only been here three years. So it's not an idea that our current planning department did not do its job with all these things that were supposed to take three years to accomplish this and where the responsibility was. These people were not here, don't blame them.
Right. So with that said, gentlemen, do you support that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's quite a privilege, and I thank you also for volunteering your time to do that and advance the general plan.
Great.
So--
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Do we need to vote this, or?
No, you don't vote.
We don't want to vote this.
You don't do the formal voting. You make an appointment.
We are, Phyllis and I are a subcommittee that will report back to the commission and to Mr. Wolf.
Well, we'll be working with Adam at times.
Reporting to me.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if we do the research and have a bunch of paper, we can bring it to you, so you don't have to go and do the research.
Okay. So that said--
You can throw it out if you want.
Thank you, guys, for that support, and this is a great endeavor. It's like sailing across the Pacific, so here we go.
And it shall not be done tomorrow.
Great.
It'll probably take a good year.
So can I, can I just add one more thing to that? It's a, so for me, sustainability is a huge issue as far as design.
Absolutely.
And I don't want to see it as a punitive or control situation, but I would like to explore a section that encourages, gives carrots to the community and to the design process and the design review process that would forward a sustainable agenda. You know, I see wording in it that just encourage, like, talks about it, but are there ways that we can really strengthen it and make sure that all our projects are to the best for sustainability?
Did you see this?
We do have--
Next to the last one?
Yeah, I thought, I thought that was--
Talking about sustainable, the PV panels.
We do have that on our mind, and it was part of an outline that presented to Adam. So yes, sustainability is important.
I can speak to that during my report, actually.
Okay.
I think more and more, we're going to have to encourage it and do what we can, and just like with, well, when they started worrying about fireproofing roofs several years ago, and I guess it became state law eventually, that if you were redoing a new roof, that if you had a certain amount, you had to, you couldn't use this cedar shake and stuff like that, that, you know, these are the type of things that I think are going to happen in the future, and we can be looking at it now, and that we can be at the forefront for once, instead of lagging behind.
Okay. Thank you, Phyllis. I think we want to try to get going.
Go on, yes.
So, Mr. Lee, would you give your report on the last town council meeting?
Yes. There were two items that I think the planning commission would be very interested in. One is Doug's convincing of the council to allow the greater lot coverage. So there was, I think, was it unanimous, or there was one dissenting vote?
One dissenting.
But, you know, I think that that really feeds into the keeping the one story, you know, building opportunity. It gives a lot of homeowners more opportunity to develop their properties, and I think it was really beneficial to the community, so, great.
So is that, like, now, any application that comes?
No, so--
It has to be codified.
Yeah, so it's a, the second reading is going to be scheduled for September 19th, and then there's 30-day period before it becomes effective. So we're looking at October 19th, I think, if everything, if they go ahead.
Wouldn't it be on the consent calendar when they bring it back the second time, rather than having a whole new discussion?
Right.
Let's hope so.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the other item that was discussed was the upcoming legislation that legalizes-- cannabis. The council actually made a, I forget the name of the legislature, but basically, they made a moratorium on...
Oh, correct.
Yeah.
On allowing commercial enterprises to sell, or, basically, there were 13 different licenses that can be given by the state for different functions, and all of them will be not allowed in the city until the city can better evaluate the, what they want to do moving forward.
Right, just to, so it's going to actually be, there's direction given to bring back a moratorium, urgency ordinance, which will sort of ban not every, the commercial businesses, and...
But not ban perm, the idea is, is that...
While we come up with regulations.
Right, if they could give, so January 1st is when the legislation takes enactment. So, if they were given a license in a, either existing commercial enterprise, or one that quickly filed for establishing a business here, could be grandfathered in. So, they wanted to have better control over the long-term impacts of what that legislation might have on the community. And so, I think there were, there will be things that the commission, the planning commission are going to be asked to look at.
It has passed.
Yeah, so, the codifying of the state, anything, if we don't have anything in place, then state law will override anything that the town has in place, or, since we don't have anything in place, it would essentially override.
It would allow it.
Yeah, it would allow everything.
All we had was that two-year moratorium that we were able to put in before. Did they differentiate?
Well, that was on medicinal, which is completely different.
Right. Have, did they separate? That was my question. Did they separate medicinal from commercial?
They put them together. Other things that they saw as far as discussion was the ability to cultivate on a personal level. They, the town manager talked about some recent busts that they've done, and how legally it was challenged, and we weren't able to defend it as a city. And basically, what the rights of the individuals are to grow outside of their home and inside their home. And basically, the council seemed to be in agreeance that they will probably look to only allow six plants indoors, and possibly outdoors, but...
But, they're not going to allow delivery of medicinal, then?
Nothing's going to be allowed.
So, there was a strong discouragement to try to
Right.
ban that, because, because the legality of stopping deliveries.
We're not going to, that's not part of the direction that the council gave, is terms of banning that as part of the moratorium.
Too hard to police.
Yeah, and, and people, it was providing the service that people voted for.
Right. The mayor had a good point, that 70% of the community in Marin have voted for the rights for people to use recreational cannabis, and that, you know, by completely disallowing it within the community is not in the spirit of voters' rights.
The 70% of people who live there.
I see, yeah. No, my concern is the medicinal, that people can, it's available for those who need it.
Yeah, so, I think that the discussion was helpful, in that it provided a starting point for actually what's going to, while the council will take care of the moratorium, the actual policy is going to be, they, they wanted that to end up at the planning commission level, discussing that here. So, it will be a, I'm sure we'll have, have to put aside some significant work in several meetings for that discussion to happen with the community.
You can go back and see what was done before, because we had some hearings and stuff, and you could see some of the research. Don't see, you'll have to research it again.
I may have a good resource of someone who could come talk to us, actually.
No, that's, yeah, and stuff like, I think, actually, maybe helpful to have sort of that, again, study session workshop type of...
My brother-in-law just resigned as the marijuana czar of Colorado, so he is now...
Oh, interesting.
He is now contracting with several states, including California.
Oh, interesting.
On advising states on how to...
Consultant heaven.
Incorporate. So, he'd probably do it as a favor to me, and we don't have to pay his five hundred dollar fees, but...
You sure and tell him you said that.
People are on TV, I don't know.
But, yeah, he would be a good resource, though.
There is one other issue. The council voted to have a 6:30 meeting time.
Yep.
And that was approved.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and they can start this next meeting, and then it won't become official for two more meetings, but they can, they can decide their own times. So, it went out in public notice this last week, that the time had been changed.
Are they having a meeting on the 5th, the day of Labor Day?
No.
So, their next meeting is actually the 19th, which is when they start at 6:30?
Yes.
They're not having a meeting between...
That's correct.
Okay.
So, then that only brings up the point that we wanted to revisit that after the council had ruled, so...
I'm, yes, I am still waiting for it to frankly be adopted. I think that's, there are other rules as well, that I think they're going to be looking at, in terms of their meeting, not just meeting time. I'm happy to, we can put it on as, either the next meeting. One, one of the meetings is September. I don't really, it doesn't bother me.
Weren't they planning on a retreat?
Just think, it still hasn't adopted, so they can have public hearings about it, and people, it may not ultimately end up being 7:30, I mean, 6:30.
Weren't they planning on having a retreat to discuss any changes they were going to make to their rules and procedures?
I don't know, there's no agenda for that. It's been a discussion item, but we're not, I don't know.
Okay, because I was going to say, if they're going to do that, we should wait until they have, look at their rules and procedures, so ours can mirror them, you know?
Phyllis, we're getting into stuff we shouldn't be getting into here. It's not a report, right?
Anything else you would like to report, Adam? What do you want to tell us about?
I just wanted to mention, so we have the next meeting, Amy's Kitchen will be, will be having a study session. Doug will be providing, giving that presentation along with myself. And I think, actually, you might as well keep the, it'll be interesting, I think what's good is that one of the things that they will be looking at, and they have looked at already, I know, because I've had a meeting with them, is that they have looked at, like, the San Clemente Paradise Drive specific plan, and the design standards. So, that actually, they will be using our design standards and guidelines there to present some of how that project relates to those requirements. So, keep that piece of, you can look at that document in the, in the staff report. And other than that, I don't, I wanted, I did want to mention about the cannabis, so thank you for bringing that up. That will be a piece of work moving forward. And I think, I think that's it for now.
All right, so do you feel comfortable sort of doing some sort of presentation of a 6:30 meeting time?
Sure. I don't know if we need a present, I mean, it's, it'll be pretty, pretty brief.
Yeah.
I don't know if I could stretch that one out too much.
We can't just put it in that first grouping, where they just either...
We could talk about seasonal changes, maybe, and...
Seasonal changes.
Do we go at daylight, say, I don't know, it's tricky, but, no.
Well, that's what I thought we could do.
Happy to put that on.
They would talk about changing, instead of using Robert's Rules of Order, you said, that we should wait and see, so we can...
That's true. There are other, there are other rules, but...
So, we should do ours once they get theirs in place? I was thinking.
It's, if other commissioners would like to have it on, I'm happy to put it on.
I think...
I'm supportive of the 6:30 meeting time discussion.
Done, discussion.
Okay, so that covers the proposed agenda items. And does anybody have any commentary on the minutes from August 8th, 2017?
No.
Move to...
Second.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Move to adjourn, anybody?
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Thank you.